Hit the desk and the light coming up right there.
Oh, whoa.
Yeah, so what, what, what happens is it's actually meeting eighteen and nineteen or anything, but twenty two.
Right, so.
So, August third was approved on August eighth, so you don't even have to approve August three.
So it's just meeting nineteen.
Which is August eighth.
Okay. No, but it did work out.
Yep.
Meeting.
Glad we made it here. Giselle, I have to decide if it was just your challenge or.
I know, take it where you're going, but we could get our meeting on Monday.
We feel like we're giving this one seven hundred.
I've helped on a lot of them, I saw it, it was probably not that, um, they, he can sit, but he wouldn't be able to work because he doesn't get his. I think that's what he's having, I, I think they can sit, we bring them in, they, they can't go as soon as they enter this morning. So, two more five?
Yeah, right, you can approve it.
Okay, okay.
Right after the meeting decided.
One more second.
If you, if you want to ask if there are any adjustments.
Okay.
I'll mention in minutes, the special minutes that we made will be there.
I'd like to call the twenty first meeting of Madawaska School Committee to order, when we stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any adjustments to the meeting, Ben?
Yeah, and you have under approval of minutes, special meeting twenty, those are not in your packet, so we'll table those. Accidentally, we put meeting eighteen minutes, which have already been approved, so the only minutes you'll approve are the meeting nineteen minutes. So you can strike the special meeting twenty. Also, under new business B, appointment of a new school committee member, we're actually going to move that to right after the public participation, so that we could potentially fill a seat at the beginning of the meeting, so new business B, right after public participation.
Is there anybody here to speak on any of the items on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the appointment of the new school committee member.
So I do believe that you had a couple of candidates who were interested in filling the vacancy. We had Nick Garette and also Leo Sirwa. Were there any other names that we received, school committee members, did you get any other names other than that? Giselle, did you get any?
I did not.
So your consideration is for Nick Garette or Leo Sirwa at this time?
I believe that we accept Nick Garette for the remainder of the twenty twenty one school year seat that Mr. Kent had.
Move by Robert, we'll have a second.
A second back.
Mindy? Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Nick?
Nick, you're welcome to join us, just to remind you, Nick, you haven't been sworn in, so you can't officially vote. You can, but we're just not going to count it. But welcome, thank you, Nick, for, for being here.
Okay, we'll move to the approval of meeting number nineteen on August eighth. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll be ten.
Robert? Do I have a second? Mindy? Any discussion on the August eighth meeting? All those in favor? And we'll move to the superintendent.
There's not a whole lot of updates from the department, we did get a notice today of a, a training program that's being pushed out in cooperation with Eastern Maine Community College, and it sounds like it's an opportunity to train substitute teachers and ed techs to better prepare them for our new reality of, of education and to assist our teachers, so we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at that and see if it brings anything that's valuable to us, but from what we read today, on the road was that it is a free opportunity, so it's a free training for these ed techs, and they will receive some micro credentials as part of the process in order to better prepare them, so we're gonna examine that and see, like I said, if it's helpful to us. Don't mean to put her on the spot, but I think Ms. Lees, everyone wants to know how the first day of MES went, if you could, if you could share?
It actually went very well, the kids took to the routines, no problem at all, lunch went like a charm, no problem. The only glitch was dismissal, but that's at all just a glitch on the first day. Otherwise than that, it was beautiful.
Awesome.
The test will be tomorrow, we have the youngers tomorrow, so.
Should be interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Best of luck. Mr. Anderson, anything to update us on, for your school?
No, things are going extremely well, very happy with the students, they, they really adapted well, and, and the staff spoke over the last night at the faculty meeting about some of the things that we discussed on the leadership team, and they were pleased and relieved to hear that some of those concerned would be addressed.
And specific to what Mr. Anderson is mentioning, we had a high school leadership team meeting, so that's two leaders from this building, two from Wisdom, two from Fort Kent Community High School, and the principals, and, and one teacher from the tech center, and we meet monthly just to talk about goals and objectives, and it, it became really obvious in that meeting that some of the biggest needs that the teachers are expressing right now are the needs to just collaborate, and right now, they're missing that opportunity because they're go-go-go all the time, they're covering duties, and, and, you know, sitting together in a staff room is not something that we were doing anymore, so they were speaking in volumes about that, they were also speaking about additional opportunities to advance their knowledge on the technologies we've been providing them, so we put out a survey today, Sharon and Peter put out a survey to get some information based on what some teachers are experiencing and what they're ready to help us deliver, and on our early release, which is September eighteen, we're going to put together a half-day workshop specific to those, those needs and goals, time to collaborate on ways we can increase our communication together in this weird time, and, and what are some success stories that are occurring in different places that, that we can maybe borrow from, and then additional training on things specific to what those teachers need, and we're focusing it on Google, the Google apps for education, the, the, the technology we've provided for distance learning, so the cameras and, and that type of thing, and then how to manage both environments, how do you manage kids in a classroom and kids at home at the same time? So those are all things that we're, we're going to talk about. We meet with the elementary leaders next Tuesday, we're going to go through the same process, hear their needs, it'll still be early for them because they just started school, but I'm sure they'll already be experiencing some, oh my goodness, so we'll, we'll get their feedback and, and plan accordingly. Thank you, Lees, and thank you, Wayne, for filling us in.
Thank you. We'll move on to items of business, under open business, fall sports and P A guidance.
So we were supposed to receive the fall sports new guidance yesterday, they did not come in. Word was that it, it was not smooth sailing with all the parties involved, you have, you know, the D O E involved, you have Maine Superintendent's Association involved, you have D H H S involved, you have all the athletic groups involved. We were hopeful that they would come out first thing today, they didn't, they finally came out at around four thirty, I think it was pushed out around three thirty to the athletic directors, and by the time I got it, it was four thirty, so the stuff in your big packet is old news now, and the stuff I put in front of you as, as copies, starting with this email that's from Patty Newman, who is, is from the executive, from the N P A office, just kind of summarizes some of the things that, that they're looking for, so I'm reading right from the middle. A few points of clarification, prior to starting any school-based activities, schools must receive approval from their local governing board. Ultimately, the decision to sponsor these activities will be at the local level. Schools should consider developing a consistent and assumption of risk document outlining the risk associated with participating in sports. All coaches paid and/or volunteered must complete a free course called COVID for Coaches. The N P A will not be able to sponsor football or volleyball as varsity sport, that doesn't impact us here at Madawaska. To keep students active and engaged, schools may provide a seven versus seven flag or touch football program this fall. Volleyball, if played outside, can be used as an activity, no inside practices are to be held this fall, so if it rains, coaches cannot move their soccer practice indoors, they're, they're just going to have to cancel practice. Should a county be designated yellow or red, there should be no practices or games until that, that county goes back into the green. Schools must follow the governor's executive order for gathering size limits, currently set at a hundred people, and schools must follow the Maine C D C recommendations, and, and that's basically what our, our reintegration plan follows. All athletes other than those involved in the game, coaches, official staff, spectators must always wear a mask. This includes the officials wearing a mask during the contest, sideline cheer doesn't impact us. Each sport has developed a sports-specific guideline for us to look at, and each fall activity has a revised bulletin. So, the second document in your packet is the school sports guidance return to competition, and this gives a, a basic overview of, of what we're talking about with regards to, to returning. It's not much different than what you've received before until you get to page four. Page four has, has a, you'll see a table with risk factors of sports, and this comes from the community sports guidelines, that is basically saying lower, lower-risk sports like golf, you can follow these expectations, moderate-risk sports like soccer, you should follow these expectations, and what I'll just bring your attention to are the levels that, that you should follow, so if I'm looking at soccer, which is primarily the, the big, the big debate right now, soccer falls under moderate risk, and you can follow up to level four for soccer because soccer is an outdoor sport. For the levels, you would go back to page three, and you'll see on page three what the levels mean. Level one is performing skill-building drills, conditioning at home alone or with household members, so that's, you know, just, just working out on your own. Level two is team-based practice with physically-distanced group activities, that's what our teams are doing now. Our teams are practicing, but they're distancing, so they're staying in cohorts and pods, and they're not playing full scrimmages. Level three, you can start within team competition, like scrimmages, and this level of play involves one cohort of participants. So if we were to approve this plan, next week would be preseason for our teams, they would be able to start scrimmaging themselves, so, you know, a blue and a white team, and, you know, the offense versus defense or whatever, they would be able to start that. Level four is where we, where we would go up to, is competition between teams of the same geographic area, such as the same county or adjacent counties, because this involves two cohorts. We had a, an athletic director's meeting, or they had an athletic director's meeting last week where they discussed an Arustic County League-only pitch for this, because they knew that this is probably what was counting, coming up. In that proposal, none of the Arustic County teams would be playing outside of county, so Presqueal would not go down and play Herman, Caribou would not go down and play Brunswick, every team would stay in Arustic County in this, in this makeup, and the schools would be divided into large schools and small schools categories. Madawaska sits on the fence between the large and the small schools, so I think Madawaska would have been put in the large school designation, meaning we would play the teams of Fort Kent, Holton, Caribou, Presqueal, and I believe Mars Hill. Those are the teams that we would play, and then the smaller teams would play their pool of, of teams. We would play, the, the limit would be ten games, so essentially, you're playing, you're playing each team twice, once home, once away, and we, we also have some other considerations that we spoke of as superintendents that I'll get to when we go through the, the soccer-specific guidelines. For those soccer-specific guidelines, if you'll just turn your packet beyond page eleven, is the soccer-specific outline. So, they, they wanted to make sure that in their guidance, they're trying to really follow the social distancing as best they can whenever, whenever possible. So, one thing that I was pleased to see was that this, this is supported, and that opening paragraph on page one, it's supported by the N P A, the National Federation of School Associations, the Maine Department of Education, Maine D H H S, so they're supporting this, and they're saying players are going to stay six feet apart whenever possible, so that's during warm-ups, drills, six feet all the time. Organizers should identify staff members as volunteers, and everyone should remain six feet apart, that includes the spectators. Spectator capacity is going to be limited at a hundred, but what we felt as superintendents of Arustic County was, how do you do that, do you just, your first hundred tickets and then that's it, you close the gate? What if, you know, what, what if the principal doesn't make it in, or what if the, you know, the, the, a parent doesn't make it in? So we felt that it would be more appropriate and, and more straight across the board if we, if we didn't even recognize the hundred, but we said the, the, the home team parents get a ticket to the game, and that's the only spectators we will have at the games, the parents of the home team. So you have, you have the, the opposing team that's allowed in there, you have our team that's in there, you have the officials, the ball runners, you have the administrators running the, the activity, and then the spectators you're bringing in are home team parents only. Essentially, we're going to give each player two lanyards with a, with a, with a ticket, and give that to your parents, and there you have it. There were discussion about can the parent give that to mama, can they give it to, you know, the, the brother? And we, we ultimately said, no, let's not, let's not open up this to all these things that we'd have to police because it's already going to be hard enough, it's going to be at a home game, the mother and father of the, of the home team can be at that game, and then, other than that, we're live-streaming everything so that all our games can be viewed via livestream. So that's, that was our, that was our, a solution for, for the, the spectators, because we all know in each community, you have some different setups that make things very difficult for us to, to factor in. If you take, for example, here at, at your field, you have a nice fence that, that surrounds your field, you can actually have a gate system where you're, you're collecting tickets up to a hundred, other fields don't have that. You think about Fort Fairfield, you think about Fort Kent, you know, where you can drive a car right up to the field, how are you going to, how are you going to prevent, and then all of a sudden, now you're going to car windows and you're saying leave, and you know, you know, and it's, it's too much to try to police, so home team parents only. Face coverings were a big, a big debate.
Quick, quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Which schools have already approved, you know, that concept?
I don't, no.
No, okay.
I, I can tell you that thirty-three has.
Thirty-three has.
Yeah, yeah, that's the only, we're, we're supposed to talk about it tomorrow as superintendents, again. Face coverings, everyone wears a face covering, except the players who are actively involved in the game, and they recognize that that is against C D C guidelines, but because it's an outdoor activity, because the health and wellness of that athlete is also in question, everybody on the bench, the coaches, the referees, referees will not be blowing a whistle, they'll have, you know, some kind of horn or something else, everybody else has a face mask, including all of the spectators. Scheduling, we talked about, it's within Arustic County only, it's ten games. There will be no use of the locker rooms or, or facilities, so when a home, when a, when a visiting team comes here, they're going to come dressed and ready to play, off the bus, go, and then go home. We're, we're going to limit the amount of sharing as much as possible, so there's not going to be cross, you know, we're not going to be sponsoring soccer balls for the other team to use, or we're going to keep our, our stuff to ourselves. Screening has to be conducted before, before each game, so all of these things are in place, there's not going to be any high fives, there's not going to be handshakes, there's not going to be any physical touching beyond what happens in the game, and, and so on and so forth. Trying to think about, oh, it's team travel, one thing that we talked about is if we have to follow the transportation guidelines that we have in place, which is to not fill the capacity of a bus, we are therefore not going to travel our boys' and girls' teams together. If, if Madawaska is playing Fort Kent, the boys will go to Fort Kent, and the girls will play in Madawaska and vice versa, so you're always going to have one team playing in one community and the other team playing in the other as to not transport the, the boys and girls together. We also discussed that if this is going to be in effect for varsity, we'd also like to do the same thing for middle school as much as we, we can with the limited amount of time we have, so both high school and middle school. That's what I have for you. You're going to have concern, people, about the fact that kids wear face masks in school all day, and soccer players aren't going to be wearing masks when playing soccer. The answer to that is athletics are a voluntary process, school is not voluntary. All kids must go to school, not all kids must play soccer, and I know that the illness of a player impacts more than just the player, it impacts their family and their classmates and all of those things, that's why the screening is so important with those athletes. If they've played a game and the next day they don't feel well, we really need to make sure that we have all of those screening things in place so that we're protecting our schools as best we can.
What do you need from this board for this?
If, if this board feels that it is safe to follow these guidelines, according to, to what you've seen today, this board would need to approve our, our teams to enter into this Arustic County League for the remainder of this season.
I, I like the concept of Arustic County, I think, I'm glad that we finally have some direction that we can not just have every week or two kicked down the road. You know, I, I, soccer's important to the kids, it's important to the families, I, I really think that we should, that hundred-person outdoor limit, you know, I think we need to find a way to, you know, okay, fine, some schools might not be able to, but if we can, I think we should entertain having at least that hundred-person outdoor limit reached.
What's difficult about that, Robert, is that I can't ensure that when our kids go to Fort Fairfield, that they're all protected the same way that they will be here in Madawaska. If I can limit the amount of people at, at this game here, and it might be eighty, it might be, you know, seventy-eight, and, and Tim Watt can do the same thing in Fort Fairfield because it's just those parents, I know that you're, you're not going to, I know that you're not going to have crowds of people coming out of the back of a tailgate of a pickup truck because the pickup truck is parked there, I just, I, I can't guarantee that that's not going to happen if we open it up beyond parents only. We, we kind of really have to set that limit, and as superintendents, we all agreed that we were going to advocate for that to our boards, as difficult as it is, but for us, it's about the kids, it's, you know.
It is, it's about the kids, you know, and, and us finding a way to keep them safe, keep the people that would be spectators safe, but I, I think there's ways to do that, you know, I, I, you just mentioned, you know, in-and-out gates at our, at our school field. Just seems like we would be doing a bit of injustice to, to the kids, not having, you know, all the support that they could possibly have along, outside the field.
Picture what happens on the small field during a varsity game here in Madawaska, what's going on in that lower field all night long?
Yeah, kids are playing, I mean, right even behind the net, by the snack shack that won't be open this year, but I mean, yeah, it's, it's a community event, and there's got to be a way of policing it, so maybe you, you talked about, you know, lanyards with tickets, so, so maybe we still issue lanyards with tickets to the kids, even to the visiting teams, whatever it is, but to the kids, and let them, you know, distribute those tickets, and, you know, you, you still talked about, you know, screening or checking tickets as they come in, you know, maybe that's still something we can do, but instead of limiting it to that hundred mark, or less than hundred mark, let's, let's get to the hundred mark. So the same concept, but instead of them getting two tickets, they get three.
I understand, I understand, but again, the. But, again, there's so many moving pieces, that if Madawaska decides to do their own thing, that impacts every other community who superintendent says, I'm going to go advocate for that. So, it's fine, it's just, if Fort Fairfield then decides, well, we're not playing Madawaska, because I don't know how many fans are going to be there, it's going to, it is what it is.
We could limit it at 100 though.
We could limit it at 100, but...
Well, then that's, we'd have to limit it somewhere.
And I can guarantee you that'll happen here in Madawaska. I cannot guarantee you that'll happen in Van Buren, or Fort Kent. Well, I can guarantee Fort Kent, but I can't guarantee other schools, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chair, if all the superintendents have agreed that it would be parents only, if any community extends beyond that, does that disqualify our communities from the Arusta League? Do we know that? Because it sounds like you said that all the superintendents agreed that they would limit parents only.
Peter, I don't know, I don't know what it means. I know that it is September 10 today, and we got guidance an hour ago, and we had pre-meetings with superintendents, and athletic directors have had their own meetings, and everybody has talked about their own thing. And so, superintendents got together a few days ago and said, how can we ensure what it looks like here looks like there? And we came to a consensus that parents only, and livestream for everybody else.
So, including whoever does that?
I don't know.
You don't, you don't know, yeah. You mentioned that no other board has approved this plan, so.
That's including the other teams, players, coaches, our teams, players, coaches. So, you're looking at, it might be, I mean, we've got at least 11 kids on our field, so that's a possibility of another 22 parents. So, you're up to 33 just on our side, with the 11 from, you know, depending on how, I guess we're on going with, depending on how many kids are on our team.
Yep.
We might hit the 100 anyway.
Yeah, Prescott won't even be allowed, both parents. They're only going to have to have one parent, because they have cheerleaders that need to be on the sideline. And so, he's worried about, not all his parents would be able to get there.
I guess every community has its challenge, and it's not for us to be a rogue school out there, and I'm not even trying to bring that up, to be complicated and be a rogue school. I just, we have a 100 number that we could reach, and I think it's not straying far from the system that you just presented about giving tickets and letting sure, instead of it being two, maybe it's three, depending, you know, if we have 16 athletes on the girls' team, or 20 boys on the other team.
So, that 100 includes everybody on the field?
Players, it says it here, players, referees, so it even shrinks it even smaller, who's actually going to be allowed onto the field? With every player getting three tickets, at least it maximizes that 100, that's all I'm asking. Not to be a rogue facility, not to jeopardize us playing in Arusta League.
But who's going to police that? Who's going to police it?
Well, who's going to police it for just the two people, the two parents? Who's going to be there? Somebody has to be there just to make sure that there's only two parents coming on, so why not the same person make sure there's only three?
We know who our parents are, it's going to be very easy to police that.
And maybe we can knock on the booster's door, maybe to help manage that, you know, they sell tickets at basketball games, they put somebody there to help police it, maybe there's another entity that can help.
Your call, guys.
What a crazy time.
Is this part of it something that we have to decide tonight, as far as the amount of people?
You can approve this, you can approve this, and then you can say, but for Madawaska, we're going to fill the 100, and I've got to go back to the superintendents and say, guys, Madawaska's going to have 100. And then, then the AD schedule, and then they do their thing, and it is what it is at that time.
And your meeting, that meeting is tomorrow, did I hear you correctly?
We're going to try to get together.
Try to?
Yep.
I mean, is that something that could be, I'm assuming, like Robert is saying, I'm assuming some other schools might want to do the same thing if they can maximize up to 100.
Mm-hmm.
Not to be, like Robert's saying, the rogue school, but if others decide, hey, maybe we want to maximize the 100, I mean, can we bring that up? I'm just throwing that out there.
Absolutely.
Any way is just, it's just unfortunate for the kids, but...
Yeah, I think the parent thing is just procedural, like, because this guidance does say up to 100, so you can't have up to 100 people at the game. So, if you approve this, then we could have...
Because technically, it is going to be a moving target, because depending on the amount of kids from the other team, if a team comes in with 12 players, or comes in with 24...
Right, it's not like I can pre-distribute tickets and say, okay, these are the only tickets we have, because I don't know how...
And I get that, I'm just wondering, so how will, has that been thought of?
Maybe the athletic directors will know the schedule, I mean, they must be, have to call the coach ahead and say, how many, how many kids do you have?
And then, one kid doesn't show, I'm just nervous that we, we have 100 tickets in our hand at the door, right, and I've given the 100th ticket, and then mom comes and says, wait, and I can't let her in.
Yeah.
I'm just...
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can.
So, maybe you covered this and I didn't catch it, but you're going to give a ticket, let's say, to every parent, does this ticket also get them in if they're in Fort Fairfield or in Prescott?
No, home games only.
Just home, okay.
Yeah.
So, we don't have tickets for the team that's playing?
No.
Okay.
Home games only. No, if we do 100, we'll figure it out, and we'll limit it at 100.
It's the same system you just mentioned, instead of two, it's three tickets per kid, whatever. Yes, it's going to be a bit of a moving target, but I think a little bit more extra effort, you know, for the kids, and the families is worth it.
So, do we have a motion to move forward with the false sports?
My motion is there that we support this plan, but allow us to follow the state mandated guidelines of 100 people on the offensive.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Indeed?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? We'll move on to item B, Valley Unified Education Service Center.
I believe you have a copy of a letter that I did email to you from the SAD 27 Board. You do have a copy of that, right?
Yeah.
Right. And the letter does start by notifying that it's desire to immediately initiate the steps of withdrawal from Valley Unified Education Service Center, and then they go on to identify the reasons why. I don't know if you had a chance to check your email right before this meeting, but I did send an email to you and the other boards explaining that Giselle and I did ask the commissioner for a meeting, so that we could discuss this. So, Giselle and I left at 6:00 this morning, we drove to Augusta, had an hour meeting, and then drove back, and I was able to stop at Hussin and get a hug from my son, so it was worthwhile. Of course, he wanted McDonald's, so it was, it was a feat. In this conversation with the commissioner, she was there, as was her deputy commissioner, Scott Brown, was there, and the assistant attorney general, Sarah Foster. We talked about the letter, we talked about SAD 27's concerns, we talked about the fact that we've brought these concerns to the other two boards in the past, we talked about the think tank, we talked about acknowledging that the governance for, the governance that MSAD 27 is concerned about is something that we know needs to be resolved. We also shared that we had a meeting with SAD 33, and they had concerns about pre-K to 6 remaining locally controlled, and not moving to an RSU. They also, the SAD 33 Board, shared that they felt the site selection process that took place last year should remain in place, and not, you know, not revisit that. And then, we did share that we were meeting with you all this evening. So, in the end of discussions, and a lot of just making sure that we understood, Giselle and I were a little bit surprised that initially, it sounded like the opportunity had elapsed, that perhaps this was not going to work out, and, nice try. But we quickly, you know, provided a lot of insight that we feel that we can, we can get this back on track, and we can work together, because we've done so much good work in the past five years, and even more than that. So, here's what we agreed to at the end of that meeting. The commissioner would like us to try to continue and move forward, and by the end of this calendar year, have a signed assurance by all three districts that we are going to go into the RSU formation process, so not, we don't have to have a completed RSU thing, but just that we know that we have to go into this in order to organize for a regional school. So, that's one thing that she asked that we do, and if we don't, the project is no longer ours beyond that date. If one of the districts does successfully back out or withdraw, then we'd ask if the other two could continue with the project, and the answer to that is no. It was an application by three entities, so all three entities must be the ones who proceed with it. And she used the example of the Holton region, where they started off with four partners, one of those four backed out, and they were allowed to continue, because they still had three. And then, when the third partner backed out, they lost their project at that point in time. So, it wouldn't be fair to let us continue with two if Holton wasn't allowed to continue. If the topic of site selection were to be revisited, any engineering costs associated for that work would have to be locally funded, and that's because we've expended our share of the FEDAS grant that we used for site selection. So, reviewing any site selection would have to be at the local cost. And the sooner that we agree to number one above, so the sooner, before December 31st, it looks like our additional FEDAS funds might be earmarked for something else, if we don't claim them sooner than later. And still, that's not even a guarantee. So, the remaining $500 or so thousand that we have in place to design the school, that would, that may be in jeopardy if we don't get moving. So, that's something that we need to consider as well. The commissioner did mention to us as well that the DOE wants to build something. Right now, bids for construction are coming in real low, interest rates are great right now, they have money identified for school construction, they want to build something for someone, and right now, we're holding that up a little bit, because we're supposed to be the ones building next. And so, that December 31st date is definitely as late as they want to go, so that they can get going with other things. So, that's where we are. We do have a Valley Unified meeting on September 21, and that is the date that MSAD 27 expects a response to their petition, I guess, to withdraw. There's some language in the interlocal agreement that needs to be looked at, specific to that, that you'll need to consider, especially how a withdrawal from the Regional Service Center happens. It's not easy, unless you and 33 want it to be easy. It's all things, there's also in the interlocal agreement dispute resolution language that can be examined as a potential means to look at this. I just need some guidance from you all on how the Madawaska School Department wants to proceed.
During this morning, the commissioner and those in attendance questioned legality of 27 dissolving this, or, you know, that didn't come up, that topic didn't come up?
No, we didn't speak legality, it was more of a concern that this is all not going to happen.
And in this withdrawal dissolution, you know, it just says, as long as it's seven nights, then a member can go out easily? In so many words.
And that's to dissolve the entire thing.
Yeah.
We can still remain Valley Unified with two partners.
Okay.
Okay, so, the school construction project is here, and Valley Unified is here. Valley Unified, which is, you know, shared services, shared administration, those things, that can stay in place with just two districts. School construction project requires all three.
But the changing of, you know, going from the current V system to back in February, us needing to follow an RSU, do you have any background, again, just to help me wrap my head around, you know, how that came about, or what happened there?
I think we were, and Giselle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we were given, we were given promises that probably could have been met if one administration had stayed into office longer, so that time would have elapsed to allow for an education service center to be one of those entities to do that. Unfortunately, when you look at school governance right now in law, education service centers are not one of those governance operations. In fact, most of them are now dissolved or repealed, and RSU is quite literally the only remaining entity that we could form out of three different districts.
Peter, it was also an interpretation by the attorney general, there is, it's not prohibited for an education service center to govern a school?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not allowed, the language doesn't say it's allowed.
Okay.
So, the attorney general has said, because the language doesn't say it's allowable.
Okay.
You know what? Just literally on events, yeah. I'm sure we could talk about the formation of an RSU and all the regulations, I'd go behind that all day, but I guess how structured is forming an RSU? Is it, does it leave it up to interpretation for, you know, communities to build an RSU, or is there a platform that's saying, okay, here's the regulation, but for RSU, this is what you're following?
You have a template that you're going to follow, so you're going to form an RSU formation committee?
Okay, so it's not something that, you know, you create from?
No, you follow, you would get, we would look for somebody to facilitate that process, and then it would be a process that has community voice and choice and all of those things.
Okay, I guess that's what I want.
Yeah.
I think the only choice in the formation of an RSU is how we are going to weight your communities. It's not by SED, it's communities. And will it be by the total number of citizens, by the total number of, a percentage, a weighted vote per person, or one for one, or...
Okay.
There are, I think, three, maybe four ways, but they're all weighted according to population.
Okay.
And it is pretty prescriptive.
So, every other, every other part of the language on building an RSU is very specific, you have to follow these guidelines, except voting language on weighing which community can...
Yeah.
The reapportionment language, you have a little bit of choice.
Or you can give and take, okay.
It comes down to weighting per population.
I guess I'm just kind of wondering, you know, how much more future negotiation is there? I guess I'm just kind of wondering how much more future negotiation is there if we go down this RSU route of line by line, give and take?
I think it's pretty prescriptive.
Okay.
Is the formation of the RSU, what does that do to where we are in the process now? Does that, what does it do to site selection? What does it do to all of that? Is the RSU, does that start once the school is completed? Or are we doing that before? Which at that point, what does that mean to everything that's been done up to this date?
Yep. So the minute that all three districts sign the notice to enter into an RSU, we would have a parallel track with the school construction. So the RSU work would be allowed to start and the school construction would be allowed to continue. So we'd move forward with school construction only when this board and the other two boards sign to say, we're going to enter this RSU agreement together.
So coming back, what does that mean to site selection?
It means the next step for construction would be to take site selection to the State Board for them to either approve or not approve what we've done so far.
Of the current site that's been chosen?
Unless we decide to go revisit site selection at a local cost.
So I guess what I'm asking is by going the RSU route, are we redoing everything that's already been done? Or we're taking it from where we're at now and moving forward?
You're taking where it's at and you're moving it forward.
And the rest of timeline of this project, I use the word timeline, I know that the schedule's thrown out the window, but just timeline of events, nothing else changes in that line of this project. You showed us a 26-step timeline. You know, there's still future straw poll debating, there's still future community votes, none of that, that all still stays in track.
Correct. So let me get back to your point. I think where there's might be some negotiating before that RSU is signed, or that notice is signed is between now and then with specific non-negotiables that I think SAD 27 has outlined for you all. And then I think you're going to want to identify non-negotiables for the Madawaska School Department. And I imagine that that is going to be the only thing where that might change what's already happened. So if you were to agree to revisit site, then that would change things if that were to happen.
You said Drummond-Woodsom is our attorney?
So for this, we would not be able to use Drummond and Woodsom because it's specific to the work that's been done so far, which we all shared one attorney together as three districts. And now that presents itself as a conflict of interest. So we would be going with the same law firm that we're using in the legal dispute that we're undergoing, and that's Kate Grossman from Feral Rosenblatt, Feral Rosen something, something. Yeah, sorry.
Can I come back on the voting representation? I did find it. It is four methods, so it's prescriptive, but you have a choice there. So you asked, is there some negotiating to be done? Method one is sub-district representation. Method two is weighted votes. Directors cast a weighted vote. The third method is at-large voting. They're elected at large and they vote in the district. And then method D, it says other, directors may be elected by another method that meets the requirements, the one-man, one-vote principle. So it's important to remember, it's the one-man, one-vote principle that's important to follow these.
But it's by community and not by district?
Correct. Yeah?
So it's by community. So this community is relatively the same size as another community, whereas this district is not the same size as another district. So keep that in mind, it's by community.
When it says sub-district, it just means like if Madawaska had different zones. So sub-zone would be a better one.
Yep. Like from first half to sixth half is zone one.
So Ben, let's go back to some points that were touched at at the think-tank meeting.
Sure.
Which, one, I'll make it public, seeing that we're on live stream, that that was decided by one board. They chose to end that think-tank meeting after one meeting on their own. That was not a representation of the three units that were represented there. Because they should have showed up to the meeting to discuss that and not to make that decision on their own. So I'm just stating my point of view. One of the big points there was to include pre-K to grade 12. We told our constituents that pre-K to grade six was going to stay under local control. If we look at forming the RSU, will the pre-K to sixth grade stay under local control? Or does it fall, everything fall under the RSU?
The RSU we would seek would be the RSU that everyone would agree upon. So if everyone would be agreeable to a pre-K to 12 RSU, we'd proceed with that. If everyone would say, no, let's do a seven through 12 RSU because that's what Valley Unified is, that's what we pursue.
So we do have a choice?
We have been told we have a choice. It's an interpretation of the law that can be overturned. We would want guarantee of that before we sign anything.
Thank you.
So you can't come back five, eight years later and say, oh no, we're going to roll all this in?
Whoops.
And the letter from 27, it makes reference of the pattern of six-three votes. I don't sit on the VU board. Is that an exaggeration? Or is that, are we that divided on that board?
I think there were a couple of votes during the budget process, or right before, that we're faced with that. And one of them was the vote to approve the budget. That original vote was a six-to-three vote. And then a sidebar conversation happened right after that vote, and then a revote occurred and the vote ended up being unanimous. So that's one I can think of at the top of my head. Prior to that, we did not have three administrators, three members from each SAU. We had an administrator rep. And the votes were usually more seven-to-two or other configurations. But I'd have to go back and check how many six-to-three votes there were.
Not completely relevant, but just, I guess, fact-checking against the letter that they've sent us.
Yep.
And like Tammy said, it wasn't Madawaska that stopped the think-tank. I wasn't on that think-tank board either, and maybe hindsight should have carried on with the other 33 just to continue getting thoughts formally with them as a group. That's neither here nor there. So I think they want, 27 wants a written statement from us by the next VU meeting. I don't know if that's realistic. I don't know if our people council can formulate a letter on their behalf in response to this.
I can request one.
You can ask one.
And that's what the 33 Board would like me to do. So if you would like me to do the same thing on your behalf, depending on what your non-negotiables are, if they're similar to SAD 33, it can be a joint letter. Or I can ask for separate letters so everyone has their own stamp on something. It's up to you how you want that to happen.
The non-negotiables is the site selection. I don't know speaking on it. He got very bloody.
Yes.
I don't think the taxpayers would agree to put money into that.
We've been through it once. And our pre-K to six stay under local control, which is what we sold to our people.
Are there any other things? I'm trying to remember with the process you had and the local control of the elementary school. Tammy was on that list, but there was a bunch of other items on that list. Can you remind us of what those are, Ben? Do you have that right handy?
I can't remember what you're talking about.
I think you might be right with the strategic goals.
I can't remember the title of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that what it was? Yeah, I know there was multiple items on that list. Yes, thank you.
While I'm getting this, one thing that SAD 27 is looking to address is not only the RSU formation, which we've discussed, and the site selection, but it's also going to be the governance of Valley Unified. So right now, as you know it, Valley Unified is a 3-3-3 board with equal weight. And that's concerning to SAD 27. And it goes to how decisions are made moving forward, specific to this regional school, and making sure that things aren't stalled at six-to-three votes forever, or however else, actually, it wouldn't even be stalled, six-to-three would pass for most votes through Valley Unified because not everything requires the supermajority vote. So they're going to want some kind of concession on that as well. One thing I propose to the 33 Board is if we're going to work on governance language for an RSU, and we know we have to do that, why don't we just look at trying to match that governance language for the Education Service Center so that we're talking about the same thing? And I don't even know if we can fully just do that as the same board. I don't even know that. But it just seems to me if we're going to go through all this work of agreeing on a governance structure, and we're going to come to an agreement, wouldn't it just make sense to have the same governance structure for both those entities? So I do throw that out to you as something to consider. Because I think holding ground and saying, no, 3-3-3 is all it can be, I don't know where that's going to get us. Louis, specific to what you just asked, this is our strategic priorities. One of them was a high school regionalization. The other one was an elementary school in each district. Three was adult and continuing ed be merged, which it already has been. Shared administrative structure, which we've already merged. Optimizing the use of the tech center, which there's not even a spare room in that place anymore because we are optimizing it. Building collaboration with UMFK and Northern Maine Community College. Just today, Peter and I got an email from Scott Wasin talking about new opportunities with UMFK that we're looking into. So this continues to grow, obviously connecting with the community and then optimizing our use of technology, which this year we've put into hyperspeed.
So as far as the governance, and I understand the situation that they're bringing up, but I go back to when this was first started. Because there was three separate schools and everybody was looking at eliminating their school to have a regional school, that everybody had the same to lose. So I think everybody decided if we're going to make this happen, we're all going to have to be equal partners. And I wasn't there, but I'm just, and if anybody was there at that time, please correct me. That being said, if that wasn't the way that it was set up then, there probably wouldn't have been a second meeting. So that needs to be considered. And, you know, so we just, somebody just mentioned a while ago about, well, is something else going to change in five years or whatever? Well, we're already looking at change the way this was set up. And it's been, what, a couple of years, three years? So there was a reason why that was set up that way. So that needs to be taken into consideration.
I think part of the problem is that we keep comparing the three districts where we should be talking about the communities they represent. And as long as you have MSAD 27 with five communities piping resources in, they'll forever be able to say, we pay 50 blah blah for part of the share. And I think that's problematic because it doesn't paint a true picture of what each of those communities share in those expenses. So my advice, if we were to go down re-examining the governance structure of Valley Unified, would be to look at it community by community. Because I think we all have something to gain and lose. And all of our voices as communities need to be shared. Because I don't think every community in SAD 27 believes the same things. I don't believe Frenchville and St. Agatha in 33 believe the same thing. So I think each community needs their own voice at the table, or collective voice at the table, in order to make it work.
It's also great opportunity to experience what functioning under an RSU model might be like, because you pattern it after that. And I think it might eliminate a lot of the questions and the mystery around this RSU. How is it going to work? I think using that model for the Education Service Center gives us a chance to experience it before we actually form ours. I think that would be an advantage for everyone.
We have to remember Valley Unified in making decisions about this school is very short-term. It's only from now until the day that school opens, then the RSU takes over, and that's it. The only other decision that's Valley Unified will make is about the shared services, the shared administrative services. And so to make some changes now on something that's only going to have a lot of muscle for a short time, I'll just echo what Peter says. We've got to go down this RSU route, we know we do. I think the sooner that we look to explore that, even from the Valley Unified level, might be a benefit for us. And that's just my thoughts.
So that's a whole other structure that I don't know, do we need to, I think we can't make a decision on, you know, today to address this letter that 27 sent to us. It doesn't make mention of the current VU board structure. Talks about us coming to the table for an RSU. Talks about site selection.
When they're mentioning that sentence on the last paragraph.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at again.
Without a governance structure that provides all communities proportionate voting representation on a governing board, they're specifically talking about Valley Unified.
Where's that, Ben?
The last paragraph.
Yeah. Oh, I see it.
Yeah. And it's because that board is going to be making the decisions about this school until the school is constructed.
I guess, I mean, I know it doesn't solve any problems. I guess, I mean, I know it doesn't solve any problems or whatnot, but it just still surprises me because where this is coming from, those people originally sat on the meeting when we developed the inter-local agreement. I mean, those, those people were there. I mean, I clearly remember who was sitting to my right. But since we had that site selection that came out in the public, I mean, everything else went to pot. I mean, we've been spinning our wheels. Nobody can talk to anybody. It, it just boils down to that site selection committee. Here they are putting all these restrictions on us. Must do this, must do that. Next thing you are going to know, there, we must change the site to have it in our backyard because then we're not playing ball with you. I mean, I don't know how much we're going to let twenty-seven control us. I mean, I understand the RSU, but now we've got to go into the inter-local agreement. Well, there might be site selection too that they might want to do, like, I mean, are we moving forward? Or are we just going right back to day one? I don't know. I mean, we have our non-negotiables, but like you said, if one community is willing to put the money forward and we know who has the deep pockets and they want to go through with it, what happens at that point? What if there's another, what if Fort Kent decides to have, dig in their pockets and pay out cash to have another site selection done and it ends up in their backyard? What happens at that point? I mean, we don't want to pay, thirty-three doesn't want to pay, but twenty-seven has a pot of gold someplace. What happens at that point? The site selection, oh, now goes from the site in Frenchville to the site in Fort Kent. Where are we going to be at that point? We stalled the process, we wasted more time, they spent their money because we're not spending money. What happens then? It's going to have to be there because they paid to have another site selection done? What, what's the answer to that?
But I think like Ben was saying, Tammy, um, you know, what are our non-negotiables?
But those are ours, Louis. If Fort Kent decides that they want, they can have their non-negotiables or they can have their negotiables. And they clearly said that the site selection would be at local taxpayer dollars. If, if we're not willing to put our local taxpayer dollars to have another review and neither is thirty-three, but twenty-seven does, and now the site ends up there, what happens at that point? So, we have a site, the original site in Frenchville, but now they had another revisitation and it ends up in Fort Kent. So, what are we going to do at that point?
I think we'd be right back where we are right now.
Exactly. And it all boils down to when the site was released. That's what we cannot forget. That's what has taken us here, is that site. We can give them whatever they want, but the bottom line is the site is not in their backyard and they're not willing to back down until it is. Give us this, give us that, do this. But then, oh, we can still take taxpayer dollars and reexamine the site. I don't know. They're endless, as far as I'm concerned.
This also impacts more than just the school, which is super important and probably the most important thing that we're discussing. But it also impacts all the shared services we currently have and what happens to those shared services if a member leaves Valley Unified. Um, you know, what happens at that point in time with your, your shared central office? What happens with your shared continuing ed? So, it impacts a lot of things, not just, you know, the, the opportunity for this regional school.
But we've lost sight of what this is all about. We have lost sight that this is about educating our students. It has become so political that we've lost sight of what we're doing this for. Is there any, there's never any mention of kids and the programs they can get. It's where the school is going to end up. We've lost sight of that. The school, we were looking to build a school to be able to combine numbers, increase numbers to increase course offerings. That was the goal of this. Everybody's enrollment is going down. How, how can we offer our kids more? Greater numbers mean better programs. But we've lost sight of that. It's become so political.
So, let's just say it goes where you said, and then there's another site selection that comes about. Let's say it went into the same thing, right back in Frenchville. Then what? They paid all that money to do it again and the same decision stands, it's in Frenchville.
I can almost hear him.
How unbiased is it if one, if one community is, or one school district's, it's like, wait a minute, at that point?
Exactly.
We, at that point, the site, uh, we've had a site selection that was unbiased. As far as I'm concerned, I wasn't part of it, but everybody that, all three school districts were part of it.
There was a unanimous vote, Louis.
It was unanimous.
There was a unanimous vote.
I know, so the site selection is there. If there's another site that comes up, that's, and not all three, all, all three school districts are part of that process, it's a biased system. And then at that point, we're, we're not held to have to follow through with that.
Most of the twenty-seven board was on the site selection committee too, right? Fair statement.
No, because there was, um, no, no. Because they had, uh, repeat your question, Rob.
Many of the twenty-seven board was also on the site selection committee.
Oh, yes, because Sarah was there, Jake was there.
And they voted in favor of the Frenchville.
Uh, it was Suzie Parry, right, on the site selection?
Jake, Keith and, and Sarah were the board members. Actually, Keith, uh, uh, Jake and Sarah were the board members. Keith was representing, representing his community, uh, of St. Francis, St. John, but he is a board member. Yeah.
And Suzie said as what?
She, she was on there as the town manager.
Town manager, okay, because I remember sitting right there. So, yeah, they were, Robert, yes. And Toby John Drell and Gary Sibley.
On the BU.
Were on BU when this local, inter-local agreement was done up.
And that was, that was unanimous there as well.
Correct.
So, what do we do? So, our non-negotiables on the table so far are the site and the pre-K through six. Do we leave it at that? Do we add a third? Do we add a fourth?
I mean, it's clearly stated, we, if we don't move to an RSU, we might as well forget it. Understandable. But.
And I think that makes sense. If you're going to operate a school, you're going to want to make sure that, you know, whoever's making the decisions for that school and the large bills that go with running a school, you know, that, that makes sense. I just, a whole lot of yucky to get there.
Thirty-three, were those the only two negotiables? The pre-K through six and?
There's a third one, isn't there? They had a third one. It was, uh, they desired fair representation by all communities. I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Makes sense, too. Are you looking for a motion, Ben, or what are we?
I don't think we need one. I think you just need to give me consensus that you want me to pursue with legal to get a response to this letter that includes your non-negotiables. If you're okay with that, and I, I, I see your non-negotiables as the site selection, pre-K to six, and fair representation.
Everybody good with that? I mean, and are they going to be consulting with you and with us when they're drafting this in case something else?
We'll see draft of it first.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I do, time is of the essence, so, uh, the drafts that you see may be emailed back and forth just because.
I guess Tammy, Ben, do we do this separately on our own letterhead or do we, do we do this with thirty-three?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think not to be, not to be with thirty-three in that, but I think it would be better if we were on our own letterhead.
I believe so. I feel that way. We don't need to stand with somebody else. We can stand on our own.
I just, Ben asked that question earlier. I don't think we gave him an answer to that one.
Thank you.
So, is that all you need, Ben?
That's all I need. I know what you do now.
So, we'll move on to new business, um, new hires.
And I apologize, you should have had letters, um, in your packet for these new hires. Um, and, and I apologize they didn't get in your packets.
They did. They are.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
They're not in my packet.
Oh, they are.
You emailed them to Ben.
Yeah, they were in the email.
No. Um, so, three positions that we're filling. The first, um, is our bookkeeper payroll specialist. Lucy and Giselle conducted the interview and you can see by their letter, um, they're recommending Laura Dumont for this position. So, the recommended motion is for Laura Dumont for the bookkeeper payroll specialist.
I'll move, Tammy.
Robert moves. Do I have a second? Wendy? Any discussion on Laura Dumont?
There will be a second signature. We just weren't in the same building, so.
Oh. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of hiring Laura Dumont as our bookkeeper payroll specialist? Robert, I'm assuming you're on?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, my hand is up. It was up quickly.
Um, the second, um, position that we're filling is our one-year school nurse position. Um, and the recommendation is for Melissa Pelletier. Um, and, and, um, the nurses that were interviewed were interviewed by, uh, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Lees and Ms. Lynn Wetmore. And, um, that is the recommendation, Melissa Pelletier.
Do I have a motion on our new school nurse as Melissa Pelletier? Wendy? Do I have a second? I'll move. I can move, right? Any discussion on Ms. E., Melissa Pelletier, sorry? Seeing none, all those in favor? Robert's going to abstain?
Because I don't think she's a terrific person.
And the third position we're filling is, uh, for a Title I Ed Tech III position. We had previously filled this position with another individual who decided that they were not going to be able to fulfill, um, the, the requirements as school reopened. So, um, we had, um, Lees and Julie Seer, Trish Armstrong, Jen Maisel and Ms. E. Morno interviewed and they are recommending Alexa Macy for this position.
I'll move, Tammy.
Robert, do I have a second? Uh, Louis? Any discussion on the Ed Tech III position? All those in favor? For zero. And I would need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six A to discuss the duties of officials. Do I have a motion to enter into executive? Louis, do you got a second?
Second.
Robert? All those in favor? Time? Seven twenty-one?
Hi, folks.
Are you guys open?
No, there's not going to be any.
Girls, you're all done.